We will call this February 10, 2020 workshop meeting of the Carmel Clay School Board to Order. First, I'd like to thank everybody for joining us this evening. Second, we have a very special presentation this evening to acknowledge some state champions in our midst. And then our workshop topic, we will be led by a group of Carmel High School students on our logo, so I encourage everybody to stay. But I will acknowledge that since tonight is a school night, after the presentation, we will take a photo and then a brief break. For those of you that do not want to spend the evening with us, feel free to leave. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Board member Katie Browning is absent tonight. All other board members are present.
Thank you. Please join the Smoky Row Elementary Spell Bowl State Champions to lead us in the Pledge Thank you. First on the agenda is the presentation for the Smoky Row Elementary School Spell Bowl State Champions, Principal Lila J and Dr. Beresford.
Well, thank you so much for having us on your agenda tonight. It really is always an honor to get to come to the school board meetings and just share some of the awesome things that we are accomplishing as a school. And I was thinking about how I could maybe throw our spellers out of their comfort zone a little bit tonight, so I started thinking about numbers instead. And I thought I would start there, since they've spent the whole first semester really focusing on letters, okay? So, when we started the season, our spellers all started with 750 words. They took those words and prepared for, I don't want to give away any secrets, Mrs. Miller, but about 10 weeks of time, spanning over three months. So, a lot of good quality time to prepare. We have 11 spellers on our Spell Bowl team and two wonderful staff sponsors, Ms. Kennedy and Mrs. Miller, to help coach our team. There were 11 elementary schools from Carmel represented at our branch of the competition, and we competed in over, or in eight rounds of competition. There were 56 words total in the competition. And I do remember this number very clearly, because I served on the panel to help with challenges, which is always very nerve wracking. And there were two challenges, so that's always makes it an exciting event. I think I was sweating for about three minutes during those challenges. At the state level, there were total across all elementary, middle, high school, all competition levels, there were 842 teams and 9,800 students that participated at the competition level in all levels. And one very proud school community around our spellers for their four consecutive state championships. Super proud of you guys. These students make it look really easy when they're up there, but I know how the nerves can come when you are representing your school in a competitive manner. And you guys, of course, made me and everyone so proud of how well you represented our school. And of course, I say this every day, but it was a great day to be a Rocket that day, and I was very, very proud to get to be there with you. So, I would like to call up Mrs. Miller and Ms. Kennedy, and they will introduce you to our Spell Bowl team.
And I just want to add one thing. All of our spellers that night received perfect scores, so. It was a long wait till noon the next day to find out how we placed in the state. We knew we'd either be tied for state championship, or we would stand alone, and we stood alone. So, really proud of our kids. And they had a lot of parental support getting them ready for our practices all the time. So, we do test them on over 750 words. And then, can't tell you all of our secrets, but when I'm done, I'll probably be a spelling consultant somewhere, making millions of dollars. So, I'd like to introduce our amazing team, Jory Abrams. I don't think Benny Isaac is here. Get that to him tomorrow.
Next, we will move to consent. On the consent agenda this evening is the personnel report, claims, and payroll. May I have a motion to approve consent? Pam, thank you, a second. Thank you, Lila. Any discussion on consent? No? There being no discussion on consent, we will now vote all in favor of approving consent. Please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Motion carries. We will next move to the workshop topic, I believe being led by Courtney Taylor. And I believe she wants us to move down to the table, so we will.
Okay, good evening, school board members and administrators. So, for quite some time now, the district has been collaborating with Carmel High School students on what we are calling the CCS Rebranding Project. The goal of the CCS Rebranding Project is to create a tagline and a new logo for the district. A logo and tagline are a foundation to, of a brand's identity, and it helps tell the story of who we are and what we are about. So, if you recall last spring, we worked alongside the Carmel High School DECA students to develop three taglines. Find Your Future, Excel Without Limits, and Together We Achieve. Tonight, you'll get to learn more about Phase Two, which is the logo development. The district has been working with CH art teacher, Mr. Michael Lee, and students in his Digital Design III class. Since, we've been working on this since the beginning of the school year. Mr. Lee and his students will be sharing their journey of the logo development process. They'll be engaging you all in a short workshop activity tonight, and they're going to be unveiling their four final logos for the district. After the presentation, you guys will have the opportunity to ask the students questions and provide your feedback. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Lee, art teacher for Carmel Clay Schools.
Good evening. Like she said, my name is Michael Lee. I do teach the digital design classes at Carmel High School. This, this project, I'm very thankful that we were given this opportunity to have this real-life experience. Normally, the digital design classes are a project-based class, but it's nice to have a really innate, real-life experience for them to experience. I was going to have Sarah hand out basically our slide notes, in case you had questions or something you wanted to jot down on there. Just, just for notes, just in case you want to jot something down. But we will have the on-screen PowerPoint here. All right, so our task that we were given was, first of all, to create a district logo, and we do want to encompass all the schools in the district. So, we had to think a little bit larger than where we normally think, we normally think high school, because we're there. But we really dove into the elementary schools and, and the middle schools and tried to kind of decide kind of what all of those together would, would be or would look like. Knowing that the district seal that we all know and love isn't going anywhere, we're going to be using that still, but we wanted to create a logo that went along with the taglines and just get a new, more modern, professional feel. What they, what they've told us is that the logo should relate to the new taglines. Like Courtney mentioned, there's three of the taglines. So, our, our task was pretty broad, knowing that we were going to come up with several logos for you to choose from, and we wanted to obviously make sure that they related to those taglines in some way. We talked about the colors of the logo, and pretty, and pretty in-depth, because blue and gold is Carmel's color, or Carmel High School's colors, but it's not the colors of all the elementaries and middle schools. So, we discussed that in pretty, pretty big lengths with, with Courtney, Mr. Beresford. We decided that Carmel, for the most part, people think of blue and gold. So, that's pretty much what we went with. It should also work in black and white, because not everything is in color. So, that's something that we made sure would happen as well. We weren't sure when we, when we got the task that if we were going to include a C, a CCS, or CS with imagery, or just a special font. So, there's lots of different ins and outs, different ways we could have went about this. So, we really, we really kind of just took everything as a really big hole, and then just kind of looked to see what was working and what, what wasn't. And then just kind of zeroed in on those things that were working. Courtney, Michael, Mr. Beresford were kind of open to the logo, maybe having words, maybe having imagery, maybe a combination of both. So, our clients, you all, were pretty open. They, you, I didn't feel like you had something particular in mind, which is sometimes good and sometimes bad for, as artists. We did, we did create, like Courtney said, quite a few logos, but we did get it down to four logos for you to choose and select from and talk to us about. We did have a soft deadline of January. Obviously, we met that. But we worked pretty much, probably December 20th, 21st, I mean, it was right up until the end of the semester, working on the actual logos. And then this semester, we worked on the presentation and to get ready for, for tonight. So, with that, we'd like to introduce our artists. I mentioned before, my name's Mr. Lee. Connor Chadwick. Wave to everybody. DJ Lloyd. Luis Milano-Chamber. Stephanie Breeze. Andrea Ariana Gomez. Alexa Barris. Sydney Owen. And Sarah Seaver. And with that, I'll ask Alexa to come up and talk about our timeline.
Hi, my name's Alexa Arreza. I was one of the students that worked on the logos. So, this here is our timeline. Mr. Lee first told us about this project last, last year, and we were really excited to hear about it and to participate in it. So, Mr. Lee first met with Dr. Beresford and Ms. Taylor on May 31st to talk about the project, and then he introduced it to us on August 14th. After introducing it to us, Mr. Lee assigned us many times to come up with different sketches or logo ideas that had to do with the three taglines that we were given. And as you can see, we met several times throughout the course of the semester to discuss and critique them. In between these sessions, we met with different professionals that helped us really figure out what we wanted to do, which direction we wanted to take with this project. We first met with Ms. Taylor personally, and she explained the project to us and the direction you guys wanted to go in. The second time we met with Ms. Taylor, we also met with a professional graphic designer, Ms. Brown, and she really helped us to understand that the project isn't just representing Carmel High School, but all the schools in the Carmel Clay School District. So, that really helped us to see what else we wanted to come up with. And the third time we met with professionals, we met with Mrs. Breeze, Stephanie's mom, and she really helped us to really understand the graphic design industry aspect of this project. And yeah, so, that same day we met with Mrs. Breeze, we also designed, or not designed, but came up with our bracket. So, we selected 27 of the logos we had come up with so far, and we discussed and figured out which ones we liked, which ones we didn't like, and which ones worked. And we eliminated the ones that didn't, and we kept the ones that did, and eventually we came down to eight logos. And out of these eight logos, we organized a survey that would go out to all of the Carmel, Carmel High School teachers, art teachers, and they would give this survey to their students, and they would give us feedback on which ones they liked, which ones they didn't like. And so, as you can see here, we got our results for the survey on December 17th, and that's when we really figured out the final stages of the logos, which ones really worked and which ones we wanted to present. And that's where we are with planning our presentation that we are giving to you guys today. So, these are the three taglines that we were given. We, Find Your Future, Together We Achieve, and Excel Without Limits. We tried to come up with logos for all three of them, but we mainly focused on the first two, with some aspects of the third one, Excel Without Limits.
As previously mentioned, I am Connor Chadwick, and I'm going to be talking about a little bit of our brainstorming that we did before we went into constructing the actual logos. So, what we wanted to do was we wanted to break apart the actual taglines that you gave us and kind of come up with synonyms that went along with the words that were throughout the taglines. And then, from these synonyms, we kind of wanted to see what objects or things we could think of that would be in the logo to go along with these synonyms. So, for Together We Achieve, we kind of came up with like, you know, this is an idea of collaboration, being together. And so, that came up with holding hands, growth, you know, mosaics, things like that, figures together. And then the achievement part, that brought us to a book, a star, trophy, ribbons, things such as that. And so, then for the next one, Excel Without Limits, this was, you know, excelling, surpassing those limits, shining on. And this, again, some of them were kind of repetitive, but that's okay, because that kind of gave us ideas of which worked and which didn't. And so, we had like star and mountain again, but then we have fireplace, sun, things that kind of brighten up. And then we have the limitless, boundless, you know, there's no limits, and this brought us to kind of the circle or roundabout feel of Carmel, infinity, like an arrow pointing forward. And then for the final one, we have Find Your Future. So, this find part, you know, we kind of thought of, you know, we're looking, you know, we're trying to locate, so we thought of ribbon, or, I'm sorry, eyeglass, glasses, just eyes in general, things of that. And then for the future, you know, this is kind of the end, the, the outcome that you're trying to achieve too, so we thought of a diploma, graduation, a cap and gown, things that are like this. And so, that brought us to our logos. And so, we, we had a lot of logos. And we started off with just paper and pencil, black and white, and from there, we kind of wanted to add color, because we thought that would help us figure out what would be good and what wouldn't, what would work and what wouldn't. And then finally, from the color, we decided to digitize most of them, and this is just a various amount of all of our logos. Yeah, that is, that is that.
Hi, I'm Luis Milano-Chamber. And well, as you saw, we've created a lot of logos, but none of them quite like stick or like, they weren't really calling us out, be like, this is the logo that we want to go for. So, for that, we have to like, look at what the different types of logos were. So, the first logo type is the logo type, which includes the company's name or initials in a italic font, so like Calux, HBO, Coca-Cola, CNN, all those logos are the company's names. Just, it's written in a certain way that you will remember after. Second type is pictorial mark, which includes literal imagery to symbolize the brand. So, Travelers, Jaguars, Working, and Amazon, each have a little symbol that will, that represents and reminds you of the company. So, for example, in Burger King, you can see there is the buns over the Burger King, symbolizing a burger, because that's what they sell. Amazon has the arrow going from A to Z, since Amazon has, sells everything from A to Z. The next one is abstract mark, which includes abstract shapes, symbols, or marks, which can identify an idea or characteristic of the brand. So, we have Windows, Nikes, BP, and Adidas. And the last one is emblem or enclosure, which includes the initials or name of the brand within a shape or pictural element. WPS, Colak, BMW, those are big symbols. And with that in mind, we have prepared a little activity, workshop, you may say. So, why don't you guys prepare with one of your fellow board members, and then Sarah will distribute some examples of existing logos. Why don't you take a few minutes with your partner to determine what kind of logos you're looking at? Are your logos a logo type, pictorial mark, abstract mark, or emblem enclosure? And then, when you're finished, why don't you consider what kind of logo should our school logo be? And then when you're finished, why don't you consider what kind of logo should our school logo be?
We're almost, almost done? Okay, so now we're kind of share what. Yeah, yeah. So are we almost done? Okay. Okay. Okay, so now we're all going to share what we got. So group one, can you share with us what you got? Yeah, group one. Yeah. Yeah. Right? Yes, can you just keep going?
Logotype.
Yes, all of them.
Sorry. I'm not playing, paying attention. This one is the pictorial mark.
Yes.
Target. And this one is the abstract mark.
Yeah, you got all of those right. Good job. Group two, please.
Group two, we had a NHL emblem here. So we called that the emblem. We had sprint, and we indicated that that was a pictorial mark.
That's actually abstract.
Or abstract mark. That's what we meant. That's what we meant. And then that's what we discussed. And then we had vans. You see the vans here. We struggled on this one a little bit, but we went pictorial mark.
Logotype.
Logotype.
Yeah, because it's a name.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, group three?
So first, we had NASA, which we said was a logotype.
Yep.
Then we had Doritos, which was a pictorial mark.
Yep, you're right.
And then we had PBS and abstract mark.
Yep, you got all of them right. Now, group four?
We had two different sets.
Yeah, so group four and group five are going to be mixed, I think.
We do that. So what do you think? Logotype?
Logotype.
Logotype.
Yes.
Okay, that's the first one. And these two we thought were similar, which is pictorial mark?
Yes, both of them were.
Yep.
Okay. Then we had these two.
Enclosure.
Group together.
Enclosure.
Emblem enclosure.
Emblem, yes. Okay, good job.
So we have one more to go. We had Atari. Does anybody know what Atari is? You have to be over 50 years old or you go to the throwback gaming shit store to get Atari. And.
Abstract.
Yes, yes, abstract. Okay, we're going to be moving on now.
Okay, so when we first started making logos, they started as pretty complicated. As you can see in this example, there was letters and in the hands, they all have like individual fingers. But when we spoke with our professional speakers, Maria Brown and Jennifer Breeze, who's my mom, is present, the most helpful of us would probably be that, just to like kiss advice, keep it simple stupid. So we started simplifying the designs to see if they would work better. So in this example, you can see they start losing their fingers and letters go away, and so does the background. But in this case, we actually didn't like the end result because it kind of lost what we were going for. They don't really look like hands anymore. And then eventually, when we start our brackets, we, our goal was to just lower the amount of total logos we had. We ended up with eight total after completing it. And then once we narrowed it down to those eight, we just started critiquing and revising them.
So one of the next steps we took was doing a Google Form survey to get critiques from fellow art students and art teachers. So we had about 169 students fill this out, and we sent them out to the different art teachers. And they would rate on whether they love it, or like it, or don't like it. And then they'll give critiques on it on like why they like it or why they dislike it. And we had about six logos within this Google Form survey. So one of the first ones, it wasn't really liked, it was very disliked. And so some of the critiques was shaky lines, needs more black space, it was messy. Our next one, it wasn't disliked as much as the last one, it was more okay and don't like. Some of the critiques included well-made but messy, unique. I really like how the perspective changes on the S. The next one had more like and okay overall. It's a little higher up ranked. This one also had unique, and they talked about how they enjoyed how there are two Cs. And you can see the two CCS. The next one was higher like and love. So people said modern and very clean lines, very clean, extend that. And then there's a critique on extend the outer C, so it's a clearer C. On our fifth one, it was a higher okay. And some of the critiques were nice movement within this logo, keep size of black lines more consistent. And then one of the final ones that we had people look at, this was probably the one, the more liked ones. It had higher love and like overall. And some of the critiques were a nice clean design, it's very simple and easy to read. And so we took all this information, and what we did, we took out some of the logos and made a final four. And then we took those and we redesigned them and we worked, reworked them to make them cleaner and nicer, more simple, taking these critiques from other art students.
Hello, I'm DJ, short for Darren Jr. And this is the logo I designed with modification from my classmates. I designed it to be sleek, simple, but iconic. And it's also designed for many uses. For mugs, t-shirts. For the website.
And so then along with all of our logos, we tried to kind of have some symbolism behind it. So for this one, as you can see, there are the three separate pieces of the border. And we tried to have that represent each part of the school district. So we have the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. And then as well, we have the negative space around the outside, which whether you like it or not, Carmel is nationally recognized for their roundabouts, and it does resemble a roundabout. And as well as we have the paths we take to find your future.
This is the second logo design that we made together as a group.
So these are the inaction pictures, so give you perspective on how the logo would look in different things. So like the mug, we have a shirt, and underneath we have the tagline. But that tagline can be changed to whatever, or Carmel Clay Schools. Then the press release, and we did this in black and white to show how it would look. And the website.
So on this logo, all the lines and curves represent different paths people take to find their future. Each of the letters work together to create a unified shape and cohesiveness of this logo to symbolize that together we achieve. Now, for a couple of these logos, and specifically this one, multiple taglines can work for one logo. So the two logo, the two taglines is find your future and together we achieve. We can use either one that you might decide that works better. And just like a lot of these logos, they work for multiple.
So this is our third logo. So here we put it on a mug to show its versatility, as well as a t-shirt. So Carmel Clay Schools was put under the logo to show how a logo would look with letters or words. That could easily be switched with the tagline or something.
We also decided to put it on the press release letter, because you guys used those. And well, it's important for you guys to know how that logo looks on it. That's how it looks on the school website, on the Carmel Clay Schools website. And this is symbolism, so the S in the logo represents a different path the students take to find their future. And if you look at the top of the logo, you can see the CCS provides the steps to take so students can excel without limits. Steps are illustrated at the top of the right of the logo. So with this logo, it's like you're taking a two for one, because you got two taglines in one logo.
So this is our fourth and final logo. Here it is on a mug. Here it is on a t-shirt, which it has the Carmel Clay Schools under the logo, and then examples of the taglines on the back, which again can, multiple taglines can be used for this logo.
Here's the press release with the black and white example of it at the top. And here it is on the Carmel Clay Schools website. So for the symbolism, the S can represent the road that CCS students take to find their future. And the gold CNS are connected, so together they achieve the path to success.
So this, I was honored to be a part of this project and to help design the logos. I think the most impactful thing that came out of this experience was that I learned that graphic design is definitely what I want to pursue with my future, and I really enjoyed making the logos.
So this experience has helped me gain insight to just the graphic design process and how it would work in a professional setting. And in contrast to what Sarah just said, the most impactful thing was that I don't really like doing graphic design. Wasn't very fun. Sorry, ma.
So this experience has helped me gain insight onto what I want to do as a major in college. And let me tell you that it is not graphic design. So I glad that I didn't put that in my college application. So I did learn something, though. I want to pursue a career in marketing, because even though I didn't like the whole logo process creation, I did enjoy how we met with each other and the communications skills that we all developed throughout the whole process. Although I do have new appreciation found on graphic design and logo design all that.
So this experience has helped me gain insight into the graphic design industry in general. It's not necessarily something I would want to go into in my career, but it has impacted me in the sense that it just shocks me that this logo is going to be seen by possibly state or, you know, country, I mean, the country. So it just, it's really cool to be part of this experience.
This whole experience has given me insight that I do enjoy doing graphic design and that I want to major in it, unlike many of my peers. And it's overall a very nice and fun process for me and allows me to be able to work on my creative side. But this also has been very impactful because in digital design, it's very much a one-person thing. And it allowed me to get to know my peers and work together with them on this project.
So this experience has helped me gain insight to, just like Sydney said, group work. As an artist, most of your work is going to be very personal and individual. However, while creating this logo, it was very much a group experience, trying to help each other and taking someone else's work and like doing changes to it. And it was very interesting to see how you work as a group and also how like interesting the digital design, graphic design career is, as it is very important now that our world is so media-driven. It's very important to have like a clear image of what your brand is. So yeah, it was very, like helped me gain insight into all of that career.
This experience was a pleasure to do, designing this logo with my classmates and with my teacher. Very grateful, and digital design is a very good passion. I love to design characters, logos, and this was a very good experience, seeing the process. And I'm thankful that you gave me and my classmates our time. And I'm very grateful, and I also want to do marketing. Seems very important for the next step for digital design. Thank you.
So as for me, this experience definitely helped me gain insight into real-world work and problems just within any field, honestly. I mean, sometimes we get this idea that we're going to have a client, and they're going to give us a task, and we're going to do it, and it's going to be over. But as this has shown me, it's definitely not always like that. We worked a while at this, and we had to revise, and we would talk and revise and talk and revise. And it definitely, there's, the hard work has been put into this. And so for me, the most impactful thing to come out of this experience is the experience itself. For how long we worked and how hard we worked, and just to be able to work with all my peers, it was such a proud thing to be a part of, and it's very honorable as well. it was such a proud thing to be a part of, and it's very honorable as well. And so with that, we would all like to give a special thank you to Dr. Beresford for really giving us this project in the first place. Ms. Taylor for helping us kind of be the middleman of ideas and actually moving it along. The school board members, of course, for being here and listening to us present this to you. Maria Brown and Jennifer Breeze for helping us come up with tips and ideas along the way. And then also the Carmel High School arts teachers and students for giving us the feedback we needed to get more ideas going.
Now, let's just give them another round of applause, because this was, and he said it best, I mean, they worked really, really hard, and you really don't understand sometimes how difficult a logo is until you really dive in and you're revising and tweaking, and something so simple that may look modern and clean is really, really detailed, and it takes a long time. So with that, what kind of questions and feedback do you guys have? And for you guys, if you guys want to speak up when you can, do you need to go to the mic? Okay. So, or Mr. Lee can step in and answer a question.
Well, I think first, I'd like to thank you. This was a great presentation. We have four great logos, and you were really impressive to come here and stand in front of us and give this presentation. So we appreciate that. Thank you. And then I'll turn it back over. I guess I do have one question. Is this a two-semester class that...
So actually, we have one class that has two sections in it. So we have a Digital Design 1 and a Digital Design 3 class, so an advanced class within a beginning class. So this semester would be Digital Design 2 with the Digital Design 4 kids. So they can take it as a year-long class, or they don't necessarily have to.
Do you want to, however we want to move forward, go ahead.
Dr. Beresford? Yeah? Well, first off, I will join Mr. Kirschner in just thanking you guys. I know this was not an easy project, especially when we were pitching it out, and Mr. Lee was like, "So, it's kind of like wide open." I was like, "Yeah, we kind of, we had three taglines," and said, "Go to it." And you guys just, I mean, that slide where you had the thousands of logos, I was like, "Oh, my goodness, these guys have been really hitting this hard." And your final products are great. The bad news is, we only get to pick one, you know? And these are really great. I thought it was fascinating the way you wove the taglines into the visual. And my brain doesn't do what your brain does, you know, with the visuals. And as you explained it, I just thought that was fascinating. I could see the road, you know, in number four there. And the roundabout thing really, that I, that was, not only was it cool, it was funny. And it's part of the Carmel experience, so I thought that was really cool. The pathways, you know, to the future, I loved the way you were blending the different taglines, because they are very similar. I didn't, I've seen these, because of course I got the sneak peek, because I am the superintendent, right? But the, I did not see the steps. And when you pointed that out to me, the steps and the path, it's just like, there's so much in these that, you know, when you look at them, you just, you know, when you just don't look at them, it's you got to look. And you really brought that vision to us, I thought that was great. So what I want to do is kind of open up to the board, and do you guys have any questions or comments about any of the specifics? Because this is our last chance to kind of get it from the, of course, I can chase you down, I know where you are, but the, but what kind of, what kind of comments or questions or, you know, your, you know, a little bit of feedback about kind of what you like and what you don't? We are not forced to make a decision tonight, so we can, so we can percolate on these a little bit. But we do have the pros right here in our house, so let's take advantage of it.
I will say that the more I look at each one, the more I like each one. So it does take some time to kind of take them all in. So I think for all of us, we had our favorites, and then the favorites changed, and then we had new favorites. And so, and like when you said that, you know, we only have to choose one, that's not going to hurt our feelings. All of these are our babies, because we all worked on all of these, which is different. As an artist, older than 30, you know, I have never had that chance to really work collaboratively, where like, "Here, I did a drawing, please draw on this and change it." I've never done that. So that was a really good experience for me, obviously for them as well. But yeah, it's something that I've never experienced before, so it was, I enjoyed it a lot.
I also want to say thank you. These are absolutely amazing, and I love them all. What I really appreciated is when you presented them in black and white. A completely different dimension, and it gave a perspective I wouldn't have thought about. And some of them I prefer in black and white as compared to color, so I think it's going to be, well, for me, it's very difficult. When I went through the PowerPoint in advance when I was preparing for the meeting, I asked Dr. Beresford, I'm like, "When do we have to choose? I like them all, I just, I'm not quite sure." So do, do each of you have a favorite? Or you like them all, or?
I like, I like, I like one and two.
Show a hand, who likes number one? Okay, number two? Number three? Uh, number four?
I like the one, and I also like the one and four. Those are my two favorites. I think they're all fabulous, and I really enjoy building the symbolism that you shared. Like, "Oh, fabulous." Because like Dr. Beresford, I'm more black and white, I'm a math, science kind of girl, and so it's a little, I enjoy seeing this side of other people.
Thank you for all the work you did on all of these logos. They're very nice and exciting to see. I like the lines on the very first one. It's very clean. I like the fact that when they come in to the CC, it's, they're, they're kind of spread out, like you don't have a lot of ideas of what you want to do, and then you come out on a path and it's smaller. I think that's pretty cool. Not, I'm wondering if the, when it gets into black and white, the bottom corner just kind of gets lost. That, that's just an observation as I'm looking at the black and white. But I like the CC, it's very, it's just very clean. And I kind of like the third one, because I like the steps, because when you go through the schools, you know, you go through many steps to get where you're going. And the S in the middle reminds me of Superman. So, you know, you're going through school and trying to do your best, so those are my comments.
I'll echo again, I think, what Mr. Lee said. I mean, they have grown on me from when I first looked at them till now. And then I'm going to throw another real-world experience at you guys, because this was probably not something that, or maybe you'll tell me you've already thought about it. A wise man once said, and it's Principal John Williams, that one thing Carmel has is everybody becomes a greyhound at some point. And so the thing that jumped out at me is, people already know us as greyhounds, and if there would be some way to incorporate that, and what was fresh in my mind, and this is, I think, the Tech Hounds logo. So I don't know if there's a way to, my thought, and again, I'm not an artistic person, would be to have a head of a dog coming out of one of the S's, which, you know, like I said, may throw you all for a loop that this is so, something totally, you know, crazy. Or you can say, "Oh, well, we thought about a greyhound," and something that unifies us, so.
We went through a lot of sketches with kind of pictorial kind of logos. A lot of the pictorial logos that we came up with just looked a little cliche. They looked a little cliparty. I think the same thing about the Rolex logo. I think it's a little cliparty with a little crown on there. That could just be personal preference. But we did have quite a few pictorial logos. We tried to stay away from the greyhound, actually, just because we thought that was more high school rather than elementary and middle school, and we wanted to be all-inclusive more. So we did think about that more in the very, very beginning. And I think once we talked to Courtney and some, and Maria Brown, I think we realized that, you know, we have to be more, more open and more encompassing of the district.
Thank you so much for coming tonight here, explaining the whole process, design process, and share with us the meanings underlying those logos. I really like them, every one of them. And my two favorites, like I shared before, is the first one and last one. I think the first one looks more simple, sleek, and the last one, I really like the path, you know, the pathway of that. The two middle ones, they look really nice as well. So going back to our earlier workshop activities, so we threw them into four groups, and there is another question, say, "What type of logo should a district logo look like?" I'm really curious to learn about. They look to me more, except for the first one, the other three are more like abstract logos. So is there a type of logo that's more common for, not for private, or more for school districts?
We looked at a lot of school district logos, and they were awful. Just to speak frankly, really, really bad. Really, really bad. A lot of them were pictorial, with lots of apples, lots of school buildings, lots of stars, yeah, graduation caps. So after seeing all those and seeing how they looked, I think that was one of the main reasons why we kind of stood away from the, from those. I think, like, the first and the second one, possibly the one on the right, almost has that enclosure emblem kind of feel to it, because it is kind of closed off and almost stamp-like. So I think we kind of threaded the needle in between those types of logos.
I just want to share how much I appreciate the research aspect that went into this, and I could tell the amount of time that you all took and the work. Meeting with professional graphic designers was just genius to get their opinion on the process and what you all went through, so I commend you for that work. I know there's been many districts around us that have recently gone through the logo process, and some of them have paid lots of money to get their logo, and I would put these up against many of the districts that surround us. So I commend you, congratulations, and I'm very proud of all of you. Thank you.
So I would also like to say what a great job you guys did. And the thing I really appreciate about the work that you've done is really that growth mindset, where you continue to work on draft after draft and revise it, taking feedback from not only your peers in the class, but then your peers in all of the other art classes. And I think that's just a great way, and it shows how we learn here in Carmel Clay Schools, so great job, thank you.
I know what's been said already, but really appreciate the hard work that you've put into this, and certainly the outcome is just tremendous. I really like all four of them, and I'd have a hard time picking, but I won't be disappointed with whichever one we pick. I probably lean toward, for different reasons, but I tend to lean toward the first and second one. I like the second one in that it has all three letters, Carmel Clay Schools. But as a design, I might pick the first one. I like the roundabout idea, but I just think that's kind of cool. So, great job.
That's a big compliment. Mr. Rick Michaels is an art guy, so...
I wasn't going to bring it up, but...
He's sitting here doodling.
He's the real...
There's a reason why I'm not doing it.
I did want to point out that Dr. Ostrick is correct, there's a lot of money districts have paid for these, and unfortunately, we're not going to give you guys any money whatsoever for this, but if I could, I would. But I really am proud of you guys doing a real-world project and doing it so professionally. And all the extra steps you took, it really paid off, and were wonderful. And you were right, I think it was, you talked about, you're involved with something that will be around for a long, long time, so, so even when you're as old as I am, which is just right underneath a dinosaur, you know, it'll be, it's a really big number. But, you know, you'll have something that, where you've left a mark on our district forever, and so it's pretty cool, and I'm real proud of you, so thank you so much. So I think what we'll do from now is conclude this part of the workshop and, oh, Leila, sorry.
Do you think we could get a picture? All of them and Courtney and Dwight in front of the logo, so we could have that. Yeah, if you guys want to get in there. One in front of the logo with the backdrop, and then we could do a background one. Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, I was going to say, let's get a group photo. Definitely. Put in my jacket. Yeah. Yeah. We're so busy. 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 We're so busy.[1799.88]
Those are coming in my head. I don't know yet. Thank you. So Jennifer, but one is your favorite? Sorry.
I thought it was that.
All right, next, we will move to reports. This evening, all we have is, not all we have, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. B.
We haven't adjourned yet, but you guys could skip out and don't worry about, not a problem. Really appreciate you being here tonight and fantastic job. It's just amazing. Hey, I've got a, it's only three pages, so I'll just, I'll wing through it pretty quick. But I did want to point out just a few things. Communication went out to all our families last week regarding updating on a policy that you all passed at the last meeting on background checks for visitors and volunteers. And of course, we were always taking proactive steps to keep our kids safe and our staff safe. So it is in effect, you know, from the moment it was adopted. So it's in effect immediately. But it does require volunteers and visitors in the classrooms, which includes visitors to lunch to have a background check completed and reviewed every three years. So we want to get the word out that if you, if you currently have a background check on file with Carmel Clay Schools, you've got nothing to worry about. You need, don't need to do anything. If you're not sure when your background check expires, don't worry about it. You will be sent an email several weeks before it expires to remind you that you need to re-up and redo it. And then, then of course, if you don't have a background check, you can just go to our website under Student Services, and there's a link there where you can connect it. Other questions that we've been getting is, what if I have multiple students in different buildings? You still only need to do one background check. It'll cover all the buildings, and the cost is thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Sometimes with the background checks, depending on where you've lived before, like for instance, New York, some of those states charge extra money for a background check from those states. So sometimes it can, if you're from out of state, it can be a little more expensive. But for the most part, it's thirteen, thirteen dollars ninety-five cents, good for three years, and a small price to pay to keep our kids safe. One of the exciting things going on this week is this is Culture of Care Week. It's happening. And if you remember, Culture of Care was an idea that was created in seventeen eighteen by Dr. Harmus and his leadership team, counseling team. And the goal is to celebrate and promote mental wellness and encouraging students to engage in activities that teach social and emotional self-care skills, promotes positive connections between students and, and school staff. And, and the kind of cool thing that happened this year is all the other schools in the district are also jumping in on the Culture of Care Week. So it went from a high school thing to district-wide, which is really special. Now, each school's coordinated their own unique activities, and here's a few examples. Carmel High School, they're making their own jewelry, they're creating stress-relieving fidgets, they're promoting random acts of kindness. The Planetarium's going to feature two mindfulness showings, where there's going to be therapy dogs, I think, on Friday. Special Olympics of Indiana is also designating Friday as No One Eats Alone Day. And that's a, that's a, the high school, it's No Greyhound Eats Alone. That's been a, a culture there. Champions Together and Student Government's collaborating to make sure, you know, that everybody's got somebody all week long. Woodbrook, there's a Gumball Machine poster in the teacher's lawn for staff, and they'll fill out a gumball and thank, thanking each other for something kind that they've done. Carmel Middle School's placed a large Be the Eye in Kind bulletin board. So it's, so you stand where the eye is and try to be real skinny, and you be, and it says, you know, be the eye in kind, so you are the eye in kind. And, and then they're using a hashtag, Carmel Middle School is kind. So it's kind of, it's just a lot of neat things. Carmel Elementary is doing outfits, they're doing themes. Today, they were wearing green. Tomorrow, it's neon to showcase that kindness brings out brightness in life. So there's a lot more, you know, it can go on. But it's really kind of a really neat thing that's going on across the district, and I'm really excited about. I attended The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe at Carmel High School last Saturday, and the student stage crew and directors just crushed it. They put on a wonderful performance. And that story is a tough story to convert into a play. And a lot of special effects in the movies, you know, and, but they did a lot of really creative things to, to really put together a good show. And prior to the show, they had a couple hours where kids could come, and they showed them kind of backstage, and they had, you know, face paint, all kinds of different things for kids. So it was a really well-done thing, family-friendly. Also wanted to remind everybody that we, there'll be a free showing of Screenagers: The Next Chapter as part of the Culture Care Week. And kind of the theme of that is uncovering skills for stress resilience. So we want to thank Carmel Youth Assistance Program first, because they're the sponsor of the movie. And the film examines the science behind teens' emotional challenges, the interplay of social media, and most importantly, what can be done in our schools and homes to help students build, you know, those crucial skills to navigate stress, anxiety, depression, and how to manage all that in a digital age. I will tell you, I have attended the first, this is the second version of Screenagers, and it was very powerful. And every, every parent that watched that was, learned, learned important things. And, and I think it makes you look at your use of digital media and screens a little bit different. So encourage everybody to do that. And it's open to students and their, parents and their students, students grade six through twelve. It's good. Like, the last time I saw the original Screenagers, we had a panel with a student on it. And then after it was over, the student came to me and said, Dr. Bear, we need to see this, meaning the students, because we are the consumers. And basically was telling me, how are we going to make that happen? So we made it happen. But, but yeah, I highly recommend that for families in the district. The registration's open for the Spring Parent School Safety Academy, but there's only a few seats remaining. So if you want to get one of those seats, you gotta, you gotta act quick. And it's going to be on March third and fourth, and it'll be right here in the SC from six to eight. And that continues just to grow. And one of Mr. Woodward's goals is to have a very highly trained parent group, too. So he's making that happen. And him and DJ Chef, our supervisors, the school resource officers, do a fine job with that training. Congratulations to senior, Carmel High School senior Gianna Hammons. And she won the Lilly Endowment Scholarship. And this is a big one. This scholarship provides four years of paid tuition at any Indiana college or university. So, so I know that, I know that she's happy, but I bet her parents are ecstatic. So it's amazing, it's very competitive. You know, I think we had four kids in Hamlin County that received that scholarship, so she was one of them. So really, really big deal. Along that with big deals, Carmel High School had twenty-four seniors who were selected as candidates for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. Now, only forty-five hundred kids in the nation are extended this invitation. And Carmel High School had twenty-four, which is the highest number we've had in a long, long time. So they're invited to apply, and then they're going to take one hundred and sixty-one students out of that group as U.S. Presidential Scholar Award winners. So I'm very proud of that, that group of students to, you know, to qualify for that. Clay Middle School, middle school world language teacher, Chris Kleeman, received a Lilly Teacher Creativity Fellowship Grant. And only a hundred educators across the state get this award. And the grant is an amount up to twelve thousand dollars, so it's, it's a biggie. And, and the idea behind it is to re-energize and recognize and support Indiana teachers. So it's a really special thing that Lilly does. Chris will be traveling to Spain to experience Spanish culture and explore the origin of Spanish through culturally relevant areas and museums. He'll also be walking the Camino de Santiago as a personal pilgrimage to explore his own Spanish history. So what a, what a great thing and a special thing for him. I think I'll close up in the world of sports. Creekside Middle School capped off an undefeated season by winning the Hamilton County Tournament, which is like the oldest eighth-grade tournament like in the world, at least in, in Indiana, probably the nation, it's been around a long time. But I got to watch them play, and they are really, really good. I, I think there's a high school basketball coach who's really excited for those guys to, to get to the high school next year. They were amazing. Our cheer team placed tenth in the nation at the Nationals just this weekend. And it was quite an honor to get to that final fourteen, and then they placed tenth. So congratulations to them. Our wrestling team won the regionals. So they'll be competing at semi-state in Newcastle this Saturday and try to qualify a lot of guys for the finals. We ended up with three regional champions, four runners-up, and, and three third-place folks. Now, you guys remember Suhas Chandi? He's the guy that was, went to Budapest for the Science Olympiad, and he's also a wrestler. He was a regional champion, and he had his one-hundredth victory as a Carmel wrestler. And in the whole history of Carmel wrestling, there's only been, well, he's the eighteenth in all of Carmel history to have one hundred victories in a career. So he's something special. And then there's another thing, I can't remember, we had a pretty good team. Oh, yeah, girls swimming. Yeah, they're, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they advanced twenty-three out of twenty-four individuals, swims, and all three relays to the state competition this weekend, had an amazing sectional. They scored five hundred and seventy-four out of a possible five hundred and eighty-one points. So that's near perfect. And so that was their thirty-sixth consecutive sectional. And then they're going to be going for number thirty-four on, on Friday and Saturday. So good luck to them. So then I have the bell ringer. And bell ringer made me just a little selfish, you know, tonight. But I had the best birthday ever, a little, a little over a week ago. And I turned sixty and started my seventh decade here on this earth. But I've never experienced such a wonderful outpouring of birthday wishes. And I had thousands of handmade birthday cards from our students and, and from classes, and a lot of great advice, you know, from, from a lot of students. And then there was a video compilation from every school. I made a clip, and I think Courtney put them all together. And it made me laugh, it made me cry, it made me laugh some more, and it was just amazing. But the best part of the whole thing was they did a thing called Pay It Forward, where I've never been a fan of getting presents, and, and I've always said, do something nice for somebody else. Well, they took that to heart, and all over the district, people were spreading kindness to other people and saying, hey, this is for Dr. B's birthday. And it was posted on, on a lot of the social media, and I just kept looking at them. There's just a lot of amazing things. I don't think I've ever had anything more touching than for a birthday. So this is just a real special place with special people, and it was so touching. And I continue to be the luckiest guy on the planet. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
Well, thank you. And as I said at the birthday celebration, the culture starts at the top, and we recognize that. And so it is a reflection in the mirror back at you. At this point, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Second, thank you, all in favor, we're adjourned, thank you.